Welcome everyone to the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on January 25, 2024. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 627-766-660, or join the meeting via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we will not be able to provide for real-time access. We may not be able to. But we will post a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this form of the meeting, we'll have a roll call. We could. Ginny?
Virginia Feumich votes yes.
Lee Harvey votes yes.
David H. Veach, I vote yes.
And Randy Pottash, I vote yes. So, the way the meeting is basically run is that the hearing notice is read by staff. Sarah Clark, am I right? And you, are you representative, presents an appeal or application. Anyone in favor of the appeal may speak, and there'll be a five-minute limitation on public comments, and there'll be a clock that is posted. Then anyone, after that, I'll read the correspondence. Chair, anyone that has a problem with the applications will also be addressed. Anyone against or has a question. The applicants may rebut testimony. Board members may direct questions to anyone present. The board hears any further information. Then we close the public hearing, deliberate, and then we vote on the application. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, there'll be a verbal confirmation and the note of time of adjournment. Okay. So first, we need a motion to approve minutes.
I move to approve minutes of January 11, 2024, meeting.
David Veach, seconds.
Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
I vote yes.
And David Veach votes yes.
So it was, you guys were reviewing the minutes of December 21, 2023.
I, let me do this again, move to approve the minutes of December 21, 2023.
Second. David Veach, seconds.
Okay.
And Ginny votes yes.
I approve.
David Veach approves.
And I approve as well. First application?
First application is application number 23-122. Deborah McDonald and Kimberly Bolus, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 18 Pine Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors map, 6C Block 51, Lot J11. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located 23.5 feet from Pine Drive where a 25-foot setback is required, and 38 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District floodplain elevation 11. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming in that it will be located 40 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 799 square feet, 11.2 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 1,012 square feet, 14.2 percent, or 15 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 7,118 square feet of buildable upland and 7,125 square feet of land area where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5D of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon. Jamie Norcross, representing Deborah McDonald and Kimberly Bolus. Kim Bolus is participating today remotely. The application before you is to demolish an existing two-bedroom dwelling and to construct a new two-bedroom dwelling on the site. The property was part of a 1950 subdivision, so this lot and most of the lots in this neighborhood are quite small, between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet. The house on this property was built in the mid-1950s. It's been in my client's family since 1960, so they have a lot of ties to Chatham and to this neighborhood in particular. They are planning to spend some more time in Chatham, and so they looked at an expansion of the property. The existing structure is quite small, as you can see, and it is in need of a lot of work, and so a demolition rebuild was deemed to be the most feasible option as opposed to some sort of remodel to the property. If you've been out to the site, which I'm sure you have, the stakes are a little confusing because it looks like there's more going on than there actually is. It's a pretty straightforward proposal, but given the numerous conservation stakes, related stakes, there's a lot going on in terms of colors and staking and everything else, which we can touch on as well. The lot, as I mentioned, is small. It's just over 7,100 square feet in what is now an R20 zoning district. It's just shy of the required 100 feet of frontage, as it has 95 feet. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, as it is located 23.5 feet from Pine Drive where a 25-foot setback is required. And as Sarah mentioned during the advertisement, the reading of the advertisement, it is located within the setbacks of the Conservancy District, which is the purple line running through the middle of the home that you see on the site plan in front of you. The proposed dwelling will meet all dimensional setbacks. We are pulling it back slightly from Pine Drive, with the exception of the setbacks to the Conservancy District, which will remain nonconforming as there's really no way to get outside of that setback in terms of a redevelopment of the property. The proposed dwelling, while increasing in size, is going up about 200 square feet of footprint, it will still be less than the 15 percent maximum allowed. And in terms of height, we're going to be at about 25 feet for building height, so we're five feet lower than the 30-foot maximum allowed by your bylaw. Running through the criteria, number one, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use. The applicants believe the site is adequate for the proposal. While it's a small lot, as I mentioned, it's similar in size to the neighboring lots, and the proposed house only represents an increase of approximately 200 square feet of building footprint. The structure as proposed will meet all sideline setbacks. It's at 14.1 percent, I believe, of building coverage, so below the 15 percent maximum, and almost five feet lower than the allowable ridge height. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure and neighboring properties. If you drove around, it's Pine Drive, Stoughton Lane, Patterson, and Tuckett Drive, you see it's a mixture of homes of various sizes, ages, and architectural styles. As I mentioned, the existing structure was built in the mid-1950s, and there are some homes in the neighborhood as you drive around that remain largely unchanged. However, many homes in the neighborhood have been rebuilt over the years, whether through additions or full demolitions and rebuild. To create the second level on the proposed structure, the applicants are utilizing three dormers, two in the front and one on the rear, which allow for additional living area, including a second bedroom and a bathroom. These dormers allow for this additional living area while also minimizing the overall massing of the proposed house. We think the size is compatible with neighboring homes. We think the addition of a second level through the use of dormers is consistent with a lot of properties that have undergone renovations in this area over the years. Number three, extent of the proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure or use. There is no proposed increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure or the use. Four, suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment. We believe this site is suitable for this proposed demolition and rebuild. We have been before the Conservation Commission, who found this project to be, had a favorable reception to this project. It's interesting, there's a salt marsh that you'll see over behind Stoughton Lane. There's actually a coastal bank behind our property, but then there's homes all in between that. So, not what you'd really see as a very environmentally sensitive area, but we are in their jurisdiction nonetheless, and so they thought the project as a whole was a real benefit. There'll be plantings. The existing house has a cesspool, a remnant of 1960, and we'll be installing a new Title V septic system, so that is also a benefit environmentally into the groundwater. Impact of scale setting and mass on neighborhood visual character suggests no negative impact on neighborhood visual character. The height is increasing, however, this is mitigated by the design of the proposed structure, which utilizes, as I mentioned, the dormers to create the second level, as well as a lower ridge height on the east side of the home, as you see on the front elevation here. The result is a structure that is in keeping with similar homes in the area, which have utilized dormers to add a second level while avoiding a full second story. Number six, compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses. It's a residential use in a residential neighborhood, therefore compatible. Number seven, methods of sewage disposal, source of water, and drainage. There will be a new Title V septic system installed as part of the project. We are connected to the town water, and there are no issues with drainage. Number eight, impact on traffic flow and safety. I don't believe there will be any negative impact on traffic flow and safety. Number nine, noise and litter, no issues with noise and litter. Number 10, adequacy of utilities and other public services. The property has adequate utilities. Number 11 is not applicable. And number 12, while we, a very small sliver of the properties in the floodplain, the structure itself is not, and so this criteria is also not applicable to the application before you today. I've included a comparison of gross floor area to a number of neighboring homes. I think you'll find that our structure is very much compatible in that regard to the neighboring properties, and certainly not substantially more detrimental. And with that, be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this application, either here or on Microsoft Teams?
I see no one to speak in favor.
Okay, I'm going to read the correspondence. There's just two short notes. First, there's a memo from Judith Giorgio, the health agent for the town, dated January 24, 2024. "I have reviewed the plan to raise and rebuild the house. At this property, the proposed septic system was approved with variances by the Board of Health with a two-bedroom deed restriction as a requirement. The plan before you is acceptable to the Health Division as presented." Then we have a letter from the Conservation Commission, dated January 22, 2024. "The project was heard on September 13, 2023, and October 25, 23. It is scheduled for a follow-up hearing pending ZBA approval on February 7, 2024. The project will then be conditioned and meet the performance standards under the Wetland Protection Act, the Town of Chatham Local Wetland Bylaw, Chapter 272, and regulations promulgated thereunder if approved." Now, is there anyone that would like to speak against the application or has a specific question, either here or on Microsoft Teams?
There is no one in opposition or with a question.
Okay, with that, we'll have questions from the board. David Veach?
I don't have any questions. Randy, thanks.
Lee?
No questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
Okay, so can I have a motion to close the hearing and move into deliberations?
Yes, I make a move to motion, to move to deliberations.
David Veach, seconds.
Okay, Ginny?
Ginny approves.
Lee?
Yes.
Veach approves.
And so do I. All right, deliberations. Lee?
I think this looks like a great project. It meets all the criteria, and I think it'll be great for the neighborhood.
All right, David Veach?
Yeah, I agree. It meets all of our criteria. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental in the neighborhood. It'd be an improvement to the property, and I will support it.
And Lee, I mean Ginny?
I agree with my colleagues, and I did watch the conservation hearing, and there was actually, someone said, a net gain to the environment, so I think it's all positive and meets our criteria, and I would support it.
All right, so counsel, any notations from your client about conditions?
They're not, it's going to be modular, so I guess the exterior construction is less of a concern perhaps, because again, it's going to come to the site largely intact. If it's a major concern for the board, they're okay waiting till September, but they would like to perhaps proceed in understanding of the limitations on time for weekends and whatnot during the summer.
What do you think, Mr. Veach?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, it kind of comes down to if they've got the building there and the modules in place, then, you know, it's, I mean, it's a close neighborhood. That's the only, my only consideration, you know. It's a very close neighborhood. We certainly at least, you know, restricting timing of construction during the summer scythe. I'm not, I'm kind of on the fence about it.
Okay, what do you think, Lee?
I don't know. I'm inclined to say, I'm inclined to say that normal conditions.
What about the summer?
Maybe no work on weekends. Yeah.
And Ginny?
I agree. I do think it's tight there, so I don't see any reason to not go with the normal conditions.
What about summer?
Summer, yeah.
No construction in summer?
How about no exterior construction? That's usually what we say.
Generally, we say no exterior construction.
Okay, so you still want to keep that? Yeah, is that all right?
Yeah, they weren't really hung up on the summer, no summer work. They were okay with September if that was what, they still have to, with the modular works, you have to get it produced and ordered and built, and then so there's always a time lag, so that's not, it's not a huge concern for them.
And they can keep everything on site?
Yes.
All with permission?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead and motion.
All right, so I will move to approve application number 23-122 as submitted with the following conditions. All construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, and between June 30 and Labor Day, no exterior construction should be allowed, no work permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Sure, that's fine.
David Veach, seconds.
Okay, and vote on that?
Ginny approves.
I vote yes.
Veach votes yes.
And as do I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next application, Sarah?
Application number 23-123. Robert and Ann Joyle, care of Thad Eldridge, 1038 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 33 Patuxent Trail, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors map, 5D Block 74, Lot M17. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling and proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,068 square feet, 10.9 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 1,284 square feet, 13.2 percent, where 15 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 13,385 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Mr. Eldridge.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Eldridge, East Southeast, we have a modest proposal before you. We've labeled this sunroom, and I attempted to describe that while the architectural plans say sunroom, it's not really a sunroom. It'll be light and airy, but it's an extension of the living room. As mentioned, the lot area is under, the frontage is under, but everything that we're proposing is conforming, conforming to the setbacks and to the coverage requirements. The building will increase from 10.9 percent to 13.2 percent, where 15 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is adequate, and we are pushing it rather close to the septic system. This was fully reviewed with the Board of Health agent beforehand, and it's going on piling so that it can be within that setback. In the neighborhood, we have homes that range in size from about 540 square feet to 2,500 square feet. This is right in the middle at 1284. The living space will increase to that 1284 from the 1068. We're looking at a minimal impact on the abutting properties. The Joyles already enjoy time outside. Now they just get to enjoy time in the rear of their home inside. Plus buggy that way. This will have a very limited impact on the streetscape. It will be visible from one small section of the road, and otherwise it's a residential use, which is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. I mentioned the septic system that we're getting in proximity to, and you'll read a letter from the health agent that that's fine, and we're not expecting any impact on And we're not expecting any impact on traffic flow, noise, litter, or otherwise. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of the application? If so, please indicate.
There is no one to speak in favor.
Okay, so I have a few correspondences, but they're all short. There's just a bunch of them. So we have a letter from Judith Giorgio, the health agent attached. Please find the, oh, I have no concerns regarding the addition of a sunroom on Peers at this property. Then we have a letter in support from Marilyn Michonsky, and her address is 147 Cockle Cove Road, and we support this application 100%. Mitch and Marilyn. Next, we have a letter dated December 27th, 2023, from Margaret Oatley, 25 Patuxent Trail. The proposed addition would be an asset to the community, it does not, as does their recent new home on the property. As a neighbor, I have no objection to the addition of this room. Then we have a letter dated December 14th, 2023, from Danielle and Damon James, 77 Patuxent Trail. Members of the zoning board, we, Danielle and Damon James, are writing in full support of the proposed addition at 33 Patuxent Trail. As members of this neighborhood, we've had the opportunity to review the plans and believe it will be a positive contribution to our community. We've had the pleasure of knowing Bob and Anne, and we attest to their commitment to maintaining the integrity and harmony of our neighborhood. We fully support the proposal addition and urge the zoning board of appeals to approve the project. If you require any information, don't hesitate to contact us. Then we have a letter from Robert and Patricia Dini, 39 Patuxent Trail. Dear Chatham friends, writing to indicate our complete approval of the proposed 33 Patuxent Trail addition, we are direct abutters and approve. Next, we have a letter from Lewis and Pamela Finelli, 54 Patuxent Trail, to the zoning board of appeals. We are neighbors of the Joyles and who are seeking permission to add on to their present residence at 33 Patuxent. We have received the plans, and we believe they would not only be compatible, but an asset to the community. Therefore, we encourage you to grant permission for them to proceed as planned. I think that is it. Is there anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak against the application or have a question?
I see no one in opposition or with a question.
Okay, Lee, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Dave?
No questions.
Jenny?
No questions.
Okay, so close the hearing?
Yeah, I move to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
And Dave Veitch, seconds.
Jenny approves.
I approve.
Dave Veitch approves?
As do I. All right, deliberations. Jenny?
Thad, I had a question about the, it was just more curiosity, the concrete pilings. You mentioned the proximity to, is there a rule that it can't be a concrete slab and it has to go on the pilings?
Correct. If it was a concrete slab, it would have to be 10 feet away from the septic tank and from the leaching field.
Okay.
But being on the pilings, be those concrete or fiberglass or wood even, it can be closer.
All right, so that's why that was recommended. Okay, I think it's a great project. It's a really, really cute neighborhood, and I think that you can't see it from the street, and even if you could, I think it fits right in. Clearly, all the neighbors agree, there was a lot of support there, so I think it meets our criteria, and I would support it.
And Dave Veitch?
Yeah, I agree. It's quite a neighborhood. I expected leprechauns to come jumping out of there. It's really, it's really nice, a nice little, kind of cold, little off-of-the-road kind of nice little area. Anyway, no, it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's an improvement. I noticed there were some sunrooms on some other houses, or, you know, I think the reason it's not a sunroom is because on the north side of the building, I get that part, but it's definitely an improvement, and I would support it.
And Lee?
I agree with my colleagues. It's modest, it's going to be great.
And I just want to comment that I like the way you use the term architectural style, that it's in keeping, that just sort of underlines that we do consider the styles of homes, contrary to some people's belief. We do, because we want to make sure that they're, you know, in step with the neighborhood. So I like that. And I also think neighborhoods like this in Chatham are hidden gems, and it's nice to see that people don't want to demolish them and build huge houses on these small areas. So congratulations, I think we're going to vote.
Yes, well said.
Oh, with conditions?
Yeah, so, you know, this is a pretty small addition. I don't think we need to, and certainly they're going to be working with the neighbors. I mean, I think we need to have the thing about, you know, vehicles and activity be contained on site or with permission of neighbors, but I'm not sure that we need to restrict summer.
And if I may, the hope is to have the project done for summer, so.
Very nice.
They have the time for it right now, so we can.
Okay, do you want to comment on that, Lee or Jenny?
No, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, so we'll have a motion.
So I move to approve application as submitted for a 33 Patuxent Trail with no conditions? No? Oh, the construction activity? Okay, with all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or at a neighboring property with permission of property owner.
Dave Veitch, seconds.
Jenny says yes. I vote yes.
Veitch votes yes.
As do I. Thank you very much.
Thank you much. Have a great day.
You too. Okay. All right, Sarah, moving right along.
Application number 23-124, Karen Romi, care of Michael D. Ford, Esquire, P.O. Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 351 Barnhill Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's Map, 9B Block 32, Lot 15. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and garage and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located 14.5 feet from the Westerly Butter. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, and that it will be located 14.5 feet from the Westerly Butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 3,999 square feet, 11.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,322 square feet, 6.6%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains zero feet of frontage where 100 feet is required. The lot contains 41,753 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Ford, Attorney Ford, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. That's a new Madam Chair here in Chatham now, so congratulations.
Thank you.
So I represent President and Kay Remine, they're here, seated to my right. They've owned this property for 17 years, and they have been thinking about building a new home on the site for quite a period of time. I represented them before the Historic Building Commission. We initially went there a couple of years ago, and the Historic Commission felt that it was historically significant. It was back during the pandemic, and even after the delay had expired, the Remines, because of things going on during that, did not go forward at that particular time. We went back to Historic and presented some additional information the second time around, and they found it was not historically significant, and so, and didn't impose any delay. And that was fairly recently. So I'm here with Aaron Palimis of Palimis Savory de Silva to present this petition to you. Also, I believe online is Brad Malo of Coastal Engineering, excuse me, now Ty &amp; Bond, formerly Coastal Engineering, as they have been acquired by Ty &amp; Bond, Coastal Engineering has. And they've done the site work on this particular application. So why are we here under the zoning bylaw? We're here under the zoning bylaw because of two things. One, this lot doesn't have frontage. It was created many years ago prior to zoning, enjoys an easement off of Barnhill Road, and that's its access, and historically has always been the access to a house on this particular property. That makes the lot nonconforming. Secondly, the existing house on the Westerly side is 14 and 1/2 feet off of the Butter's property line, where 15 is required. So we have those two nonconformities that exist on the site. It's a generous lot, it's over 40,000 square feet in a 20,000-square-foot zone. And so the proposal is to raise and replace it, and you'll see, as we make our presentation, that, excuse me, there was one other nonconformity, and that is lot coverage. Lot coverage in this district is limited to 10%, and currently it's 11 and 1/2%. And the proposal before you brings that into conformity at 6.6%. So at the end of the day, when this is all said and done, the frontage will obviously still not exist, but we have adequate access, obviously off of the road. We're staying at that 14 and 1/2 foot from the Westerly Butter, who you will find has written a letter in favor of the proposal. And the lot coverage will become conforming. And so those are the metrics under the zoning bylaw that kind of guided us in this. So with that, what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is to have Mr. Palimis kind of walk you through the plans, so we get a chance to look at it, both the site plan and the proposed new dwelling. And then Aaron will turn it back to me, I'll review the criteria, and then we'll be happy to take board questions.
Sure.
Aaron?
Great. Aaron Palimis, Palimis Savory de Silva, Architects Builders. Good afternoon. So here we have, I've got a little pointer here. So this just shows the site, the site is here, the existing structure and the existing garage. And then over here, this just gives you a sense of the overall lot. It's a good-sized site with other generous sites, generous properties in the neighborhood on the water. If we go to the next plan, so this is, again, the existing coverage of the structure here and the existing garage as well. If we go to the next slide, we'll run through these pretty quickly. These are just showing all the existing floors, and with that, the calculation of gross floor area, which is being reduced by quite a bit. Existing first floor and existing second floor, and then the existing detached garage. So there is both a garage on the house and then a detached garage as well, currently existing, with a gross floor area of over 7,500 feet. These are the existing elevations, just photographs. If any of you did not make it out, if you did, you would have seen, you know, these photographs, although these were in the summer, so a little different looking today. And these are some shots we took from the water. You know, it shows some of the neighboring homes. This is 353, which was recently constructed to the south, a larger home, and then also another good-sized home to the north. And this is 351, the property that we're here before you. And this is the proposed site plan. So as Mike shared, you know, our clients who are here today, their goal was to have a structure design that was more compact, efficient, with a garage that was integral. So there's been a considerable reduction in coverage in this design, which is why we're not only coming under the requirement, we're actually coming down, I believe, to, was it 6? I can't see that.
6.6.
6.6%. So where 10% is allowed. And that's both because the garage was removed, but also this new, as you can see, this new floor plan is relatively compact on this larger site. If we go to the next slide, we'll just run through the floor plan. So this just shows a lower level with some finished kind of bonus space, and then first floor, which you can see here, I mean, a relatively compact kind of open kitchen, living, dining, a two-car garage, which is integrated into the structure, entry porch, and second floor with bedrooms and some space over the garage. So, you know, relatively straightforward, gross floor area came down considerably, down to 5,800 feet from 7,500. And we think fits on the site very nicely. If you go to the next couple, so here you can see shingle-style design, white cedar, white cedar shingles on the sidewall, very, I think, you know, kind of typical New England style architectural design here on this site. So this is proposed north, proposed south, and then we have the side elevations as well. You know, rather narrow, as you can see, from the east and from the west, which is, again, why the square footage and the coverage is coming down considerably, because it is a pretty compact home for such a big site. And we just have a couple renderings here, too, that just help give it a little more color, so you can see, again, the shingles and the shutters, and, you know, we think it's a very nice-looking home, and we're hoping to be able to bring it to the site sometime soon. So we'll leave it there, and we're happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. Mr. Ford, you want to do the criteria?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So number one, adequacy of the size of the site, including but not limited to maximum lot or building coverage and setbacks. Again, the lot is just over 41,000 square feet, where 20,000 is required, although, as you could see in the photos, stretches a long distance, so it's not a tremendously wide lot, but it does include double the minimum area size. The premises is currently improved with the structure that Aaron reviewed. Post-project will result in a decrease in building coverage, 11 and 1/2%, down to 6.6%, bringing that into conformity. And the existing dwelling will remain nonconforming as to the Butter setback on the west at 14 and 1/2, where that currently exists, and 15 is required. So we think the site is clearly adequate for the proposed structure that's before you. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties? You kind of saw that from the aerial that Mr. Palimis showed you. This particular house is being reduced in both coverage and gross floor area, and there are, as you can see in the lower picture, some houses that are larger. The one on the left, the assessor's maps show that with 5,300 square feet of gross floor area, and that doesn't count any of the basement area. We've counted our basement area in the numbers that we've given you. Actually, I'll give you the exact figure off the assessor's records, 5,381 for that one to the left. I don't, maybe I have a figure on the one directly, 3,600, I guess, is the one to the right, I believe. So that would be to the right of the existing house on that aerial view. And then there is a house up behind this house that's being proposed. You can see it in that particular area. So we think it's compatible with neighboring properties in terms of its size. In terms of number three, which is the extent of the proposed increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure of use, well, there's no proposed increase. There are two nonconformities that will remain. One of is the 14 and 1/2 feet off the Westerly line, and the other is that the lot doesn't have frontage. Not much we could do about the latter. We've stayed, and frankly, we've stayed at 14 and 1/2 because the lot is fairly narrow in terms of a big lot of this size. The biggest nonconformity on the site, of course, was the lot coverage, and that is being brought into compliance. So we think that with respect So we think that with respect to increase in nonconformity, the plan is a good one. It's tried to bring the property more into conformity with the metrics of the zoning bylaw. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. We don't believe the proposed project will negatively impact neighboring properties or the natural environment. We kept it out of the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, kept it back kind of where it is now. If you go to the site plan, you'll see, oh, here it is. The 100-foot buffer is the blue line, and so all of the improvements are landward of that blue line. That's the 100-foot buffer. The red on there is the 50-foot buffer. And those are from, the wetland resource they're measured from is the top of the coastal bank. Obviously, it slopes down towards the river. Impact of scale, sighting and mass on the neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas and streetscapes. We don't believe there's going to be a negative impact on neighborhood visual character or neighborhood views, vistas or streetscapes. It's not really a streetscape per se. It's difficult to see this property from the road. I suppose you could look at the river as a streetscape. Sometimes that's done, but I think the house will fit in with the other houses that we showed you in the aerial as you look at it from the river in terms of the size of the other houses that are out there on the left and right, right there on the river. Compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses. It's going to stay residential, so I think that one's really an N/A. Adequacy of method of sewage disposal. It's on sewer, will remain on sewer. Impact of traffic flow and safety. I don't believe there's any impact there. It's a single-family home, will continue to be used as a single-family home. Noise and litter. I don't think that's really an issue, given the proposed use. There are adequate public utilities. 11 really doesn't apply, obviously, it's a formula business, and 12 doesn't apply either in terms of the floodplain, because we're out of it. So we'd suggest respectfully that you can find that this will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. And we're happy to take questions.
Oh, thank you very much. Is there anyone here or in Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of the application? If so, please indicate.
There's no one to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a letter from Christina Basset from the Historical Commission. On August 15th, 2023, the Historical Commission found that the home at 351 Barn Hill is not historically significant, so they do not impose a demolition delay. Then we have a note from Judith Giorgio, the health agent. On 1/23/24, I reviewed the plan to demo and reconstruct this property. The plan's proposed to connect to the sewer line on Barn Hill Road. The new dwelling proposed has four bedrooms. This is acceptable to replace the existing four-bedroom dwelling. Then we have sort of a lengthy note from David and Sheila Hepp dated January 25th, today, 2024, at 3:30 PM. We own the home at 22 Hilltop, which abuts 351 Barn Hill Road. We've owned our home for three years and look forward to making our home a permanent residence for a few years, in a few years. We are ready to express our opposition to the application filed for 351 Barn Hill Road for the following reasons. The new home will be significantly larger than the current. We understand the proposed plan would decrease the existing building coverage, but that only results from the elimination of the separate garage and not from actual decrease in the floor plan of the house. In fact, the gross floor area of the new home will be much larger than the gross floor area of the current home. Now, they are asking the ZBA to approve plans that will max out the height, width and width of the new home. This is in clear contrast to the dimensions of their current home, and it's unnecessary. Nonconforming lots deserve special attention from the ZBA. In this regard, we don't live in an area of Chatham where homeowners max out the proportions of their homes at the expense of the greater neighborhoods. As for one example, the proposed plan seemed to contemplate a distance of almost 17 and a half feet from the second floor to the house ridge. In contrast to the newly renovated home at 353 Barn Hill, the peak of the proposed home at 351 will sit noticeably higher than the peak of 353. Right now, the peak of the two homes is comparable without the additional seven and a half feet to be proposed to be added to 351 Barn Hill. This disparity will have a significant negative effect on the neighborhood and overall streetscape. We chose our neighborhood and the surrounding area for the look and feel of quintessential Chatham. The homes have been built and maintained in a manner that continues to look and feel the same. They propose to build a new home that does not have the same look and feel. We would not want to oversimplify the role of the ZBA, but we think an important question to ask is, which home will not look like the others? At this point, we understand the Chatham Historical Commission had additionally held that the home at 351 was historically significant. The streetscape in view from Oyster River up the surrounding neighborhoods is, in our opinion, one of the nicest in Chatham. It's special. It remains special in size and footprint. The homes are mostly visible from Oyster River. They have a beautiful location, very prominent from Oyster River. It's critical that the overall streetscape, to be preserved, is as is today. Increasing encroachment on the streetscape from new and rebuilt homes is a continuing risk throughout Chatham, and the ZBA is an important check on this encroachment. We respect and support their right to improve their home, but we hope they do so in a manner that balances with the size and scale, with the impact on the neighborhood. We do not believe the current proposal is compatible with the neighborhood, and unfortunately, it will be detrimental to our neighborhood. Next, we have a note from Angie Simmons, and it's written on January 23rd. We are writing in regards to the meeting on January 25th for the application of the Romans, and they've been excellent neighbors for almost 20 years. We wholeheartedly support their application and demolition of the existing house. We have seen and studied the demolition, new construction of the property plans, as well as Coastal Engineers' site plan. We find nothing objectionable and look forward to seeing them in their new home for future generations. Angie and Bob Simmons, 353 Barn Hill Road. Then we have another letter from Rita Russian, January 24th, 2025, and she lives at 38 Hilltop Lane. As direct neighbors of 351, we send our letter of support to demolish the existing home and building a new, beautiful home. We have no objections. We're lucky to have such lovely neighbors and wish them success. Would you like to rebut that one letter?
Sure. If you feel this is the appropriate time to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll go back to the view back from the river, please, Sarah. Just to point out, you want to point out 353? So 353, the neighbors who wrote a letter of support are right there, so that's the house directly to the south. And then the Russians are the home directly to the north. So the direct Butters to the right, over to the right, down, right on the water, Sarah, just right there. Those are the other neighbors that wrote the letter of support. So the two direct neighbors that have been in the neighborhood for a long time.
But is there anything that was in the letter that you filled?
Yeah, so I just wanted to point that out. And then, just for context, the house directly behind, that was the letter, the folks that recently purchased that structure, that was the letter that was sharing their concern. So we do have some other information. I might go through those, but I'm going to also ask if we can, can we pull up some additional photos, Sarah, if I give you this?
You know, maybe I'll go back to this. I'm sorry if I took it out of order. I don't want to upset the applecart, but I just wanted to give you a chance to, is it all right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll continue.
Okay. So first of all, I want to suggest to you that the Remines reached out to the Heps and had extensive conversations with them, principally with respect to landscaping and views and vistas. And unfortunately, we were unable to reach an agreement in that regard. But the Remines, through my office and through Palimis, Savery and De Silva, tried very hard. Just wanted you to know that, without getting into the details. So the first bullet they indicate is that the 351 Barn Hill Row will be significantly larger than the current home. I think by the metrics that we've given you, you realize that it's not. It's a reduction, clearly, in the lot coverage. They suggest that the lot coverage results solely from the elimination of the garage. As you know, on the plan that we have, we're taking the garage and making it part of the house now, and the garage is 900 square feet. So there's currently 3,990 square feet of coverage out there. If you take the garage out, there's still 3,000. We're coming in at 2,300. So it's simply not accurate to say that if you take the garage out, the house is going to be bigger in terms of coverage, because we're using the garage to get there. That's not the case, simply inaccurate. Secondly, they indicate that the ZBA, the Remines are asking the ZBA to max out the height. It's not maxed out, it's 29 feet. 30 feet is the max, so we're not maxing out the height. The new house built to the left, can you go back to that one, Erin?
Yeah, this one, well, this, you're saying this right here, this is 350...
353 that you were looking at from the water is 29.7. It was just built.
Yeah, here's that slide.
Yeah, that house. The Heps house, and we know this because my clients just received a notification that they're coming in for some potential changes to that house, is 32 feet. Somehow became nonconforming after it was constructed in 2002. So in terms of maxed out, there's only one house that's maxed out that I'm aware of, and that's the house owned by the Heps in terms of height in this particular area. The, next they go on to say that the comparison between the new house at 353 and 351, if you took the ridges of the current 353 and 351, they're about the same, and that's where it should stay. And obviously, that's because the Heps house looks over the current house. And we can go through that, and I'll give you some metrics on that. They say this disparity will have a significant negative impact on the neighborhood and the streetscape. You can determine what the neighborhood is. We would suggest otherwise, that there is no significant impact to the neighborhood or neighborhood streetscapes or vistas. So to put it in perspective, in terms of the metrics, the new house that we're proposing, the ridge is at elevation 66.8. The second deck on that Heps house, which has three decks, and then it has a basement that walks out that you can't see on this, so four levels. The second deck is at 60.9, almost 61 feet. Our ridge is 66. The third deck up there is 69. So the new house that the Remines are proposing is 66.8. So on the third deck, you still look over and out and on. So, and in looking at the plans that were filed with you, I understand they're coming in to try to expand that third deck even farther. So I just, it seemed ironic to me that the Remines were being accused of maxing things out, and I just wanted to put that into perspective.
And the ridge here is 81.1.
Yeah, their ridge is 81.1, ours is 66.8.
Any other inaccuracies, in your opinion?
Well, the conclusions drawn from the inaccurate facts.
Okay.
So we would take issue.
No, I thought you might, so I wanted to let you go. All right, so is there anybody that would like to speak against the application here or on Microsoft Teams? Sir, please wait till you get up to the mic and state your name and address, if you would.
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing David and Sheila Hepp. You obviously just read their letter, so I won't take up much more of your time. I did want to highlight a couple of their concerns that was expressed in that letter to you this afternoon. My clients see this as a substantial change to the neighborhood and to the property, and one that they don't believe is a positive change. A portion of the existing home dates back to at least 1920. The original date, I guess, is a little bit ambiguous, ambiguous, excuse me, based on the view of the Historical Commission meetings, and the applicant said 1920, the assessor said 1800, so I guess a portion of that structure is a little bit unknown as the origin, but at least 100 years old. And it was added on to over the years with various additions. A majority of the home is on the first floor, and it results in a rambling-style design that is commonly seen with older properties in Chatham that have been expanded over the years. The sighting of the house, which I think is important, is predominantly north to south, such that as viewed from Oyster River, a large portion of the structure is largely hidden from view as it's behind the front of the structure. Again, north to south and along the western boundary line. Proposed dwelling, as you've seen from the plans, is quite different. The design is certainly modern, and it's higher, seven and a half feet, going from 21.5 to 29 feet. And 30 feet is the maximum of loud. This board has told me on at least one occasion that 30 feet is not the goal. So while it might not be maxing out 30, 29 is often seen as pushing the boundary in some circumstances. It also has significantly more massing on the full second story on the plans that you see today. Going through the numbers and the gross floor area, it is correct that the numbers are decreasing. I would point out that on the second level, the existing gross floor area, according to the plan, is around 1,000 square feet. As proposed, the gross floor area on the second story will be 2,100 square feet. So it's 1,000 squared feet more on the second floor for gross floor area, and that directly relates to massing for this structure. So again, we can count basement and everything else, but the second level is going to be substantially higher and more massive than what you see today. I would also point out the sighting of the home. Instead of going north to south, it's running east to west. It's running from 14 and a half on one setback to 15 feet on the other setback. So it's using every foot, in terms of the setbacks, width, of width on this property. There's no more room to go on either side. So again, instead of north to south, we're east to west. We're going from setback to setback. We're going up seven and a half feet with a full second story. Like a lot of projects before you, I think the main crux or the main criteria for the review of this application is number five. Impact of scale, setting and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas and streetscapes. As I think Mike mentioned during his presentation, it has no frontage on Barn Hill Road. It's probably, I don't think, can be seen from Barn Hill Road. So I would suggest the streetscape is Oyster River, largely in this case, in which it is very visible from Oyster River. And you're going from a scenario where it's a north-to-south orientation, it's a largely one-story structure, which, again, the back section is largely hidden from view or obscured from view from the front, to an east-to-west orientation, seven and a half feet higher with additional mass running from sidelined setback to sidelined setback. My clients believe this is a substantial change to the visual character of the neighborhood as seen from the streetscape, in this case, Oyster River, and a negative change, in their opinion. As mentioned, it is having an impact on the view from their property. They are, in this case, it's an interesting neighborhood. What's the neighborhood? Other than the streetscape from Oyster River, there's three or four homes that can see this property. My client is one of them. And it's going to be a lot bigger, it's going to be a lot higher, and the mass is going to be significantly greater than what's there now. I heard a couple of times mentioned that they were concentrating the house, right? So you're sort of putting it in the spot. We're putting all the house in one location. We meet the setbacks, we meet the coverage requirements. But again, I've heard this board express concern, when you're trying to condense everything into one spot, and as a result of that, it almost increases the massing from a visual perspective, as opposed to allowing more of a rambling-style home where you spread out some of the living area. You spread out some of the building, has a lesser impact in terms of a visual character for neighboring properties. So with that, I've taken up enough of your time. I appreciate your time and...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the application here or on Microsoft Teams? If so, please indicate.
I see no one else that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
All right, questions from the board. David?
I don't, I just, I think I just learned something. I just thought I'd ask Jay. You know, I was trying to think, well, you know, 10% lot coverage on an R20 zone, how do we get there? But I kind of looked at the chart, and I guess that it's 10% on this lot because it's 40, it's over 30,000 square feet. 40, it's over 30,000 square feet.
It's 41,000 square feet.
And so that gets, takes it down to 10% is the lot coverage a lot. I just, I guess, I feel like I've learned the steps that, in the various lot coverages that apply based on lot sizes in conjunction with zones. It's more complicated than I thought.
It's very complicated. You're correct. Yep.
Okay, thanks. I don't, I don't think I have any other questions or anything.
Okay. Lee, do you have any questions?
I don't. I had a question regarding the generator, but I just located it on the map, so.
Okay.
I have a question about the comment the neighbor made about historic. I think they said that it was deemed by the Historic Commission to be historically significant, which it was in 2023. But then it came back, and it was voted 5-2, not historically significant. But, and in 2023, they imposed a 12-month delay.
Not in 2023?
2020.
I'm sorry, I'm getting my dates wrong.
Yes.
There were two historic hearings.
There were.
One was 2021.
Right.
Okay. And it was at that time deemed to be historically significant, 12-month delay. And then time passed, COVID, et cetera, and then I guess it was the most recent hearing that it was voted 5-2 to not be historically significant. I actually watched that. I thought, Mr. Ford and Erin, you did a great job. You showed something at that hearing that you didn't show here, which was sort of the nucleus of the original home, and how this house has just been added on over the years, very nicely, by the way, but salvaging the historic home, there wasn't really.
Right, it had been swallowed up.
That's a good observation, it was exactly swallowed up.
And I think your diagram really showed that. So really, my question was, I just wanted to confirm, the Historic Committee could have put, well, first of all, they voted it wasn't historic, but they could have, and they could have imposed another 12-month delay.
Exactly.
And they didn't. And so I don't know that the neighbor knew that or.
The neighbor was aware, they got notice of the historic hearing.
Okay, all right, so it was, maybe I just misunderstood the word, the letter, but I thought.
They make a comment in their letter as they're going through all of the other things that we've reviewed, that the Chatham Historical Commission had initially held the home at 351 Bard, I think they mean, Barn Hill Road, was historically significant. I told you that right out of the gate, and you've just watched the hearing, so you know exactly what happened.
That's what they said, but they didn't mention the second hearing.
That's correct.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You didn't have any questions, right, Lee? And you have another question?
So, yeah, I just, so Mike, you can, you can probably refresh my memory on this perhaps better than I can. With respect to neighbor versus neighbor, a specific neighbor versus neighborhood views and vistas, and with respect to our bylaw, there was a court, a case decided by the Supreme Judicial Court right here in Chatham that addressed those considerations, and maybe you can speak to that. My take from that is that the court determined that neighborhood views and vistas was the standard, but that the view of any particular, one particular butter or neighbor was not to be what we are considering, we should be considering the neighborhood views and this is.
Your recollection is correct.
Okay.
That is principally, generally, the holding of the case.
Okay.
Any more questions?
No, thanks.
Okay, so, Mr. Ford, so it's going to be 29 feet. I just want to check with the building commissioner. Do you have any issues with that? Are you comfortable? We have to watch that like a hawk? What do you think?
No, I don't have any issues with that whatsoever. Would require a height certification at the end, just to verify that it's under the 30 feet.
Yeah, and you're experienced builders, so.
We're very comfortable with it.
Yes, very good.
Absolutely.
And as to the.
We already filed the building height elevation required at filing with CBA.
Right, right, okay. I just wanted to point it out. And then also, the generator and the mechanicals, I did locate them, it took me a little bit too. But are you happy with that location?
Yes, and they're all conforming, and that location is, a location we're comfortable with.
And if you were going to change that, you'd come back to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, very good.
Yes, understood.
And then there's a, looks like there's a walking path down to the, you know, to the beach area, well, down to the parking lot. Is that something that you have access to, and is that, I'm just curious, is that something?
There may be a meandering path on the property that you can kind of get down to that beach that runs in front of the river and several.
Yeah, so can anybody just go up and down that?
No, just, it's, it's our client's access.
Very nice.
It does not provide access beyond their property.
Yeah, okay.
You can see it, it's the dotted line.
Yeah, it's cool, yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty property.
Yeah, very nice, very nice. I don't have any other questions? If no one else has any questions, or did you, Ginny? No? Okay, then please.
Yep, I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach, seconds.
And I approve.
I approve.
Veach votes yes.
As do I. So deliberations. Lee?
Okay, well, I, I know this area fairly well. I travel down the Oyster River often, and I do look up and admire the homes. I watched the one to the left of your clients being built, and it, and you can see it, but it's not, it's not overpowering. And, I mean, I hope this one isn't going to be overpowering either. I mean, there's some great trees, there's some great, you know, tall, big trees in the area, and that always helps. So I think this meets our criteria. I don't, I don't think it will be substantially more detrimental, and I will be in support of it.
Okay, very good. Mr. Veach.
Yes, I agree. I think it's, first of all, when I first was looking at, through this application, I thought, hmm, Attorney Ford seems to be specializing in bringing us reductions in lot coverage.
I'll try to keep that up.
And then, well, we can talk about that later, too. But anyway, you know, so that, my first, this is very interesting, because it's rare that someone comes and seeks a reduction in lot coverage on a lot, at least as far as what gets to us. So that's commendable, and I certainly would understand the desire to compact the structure for many reasons. The height is going up, but it's, I mean, it's a foot below the maximum is really not, that's not pushing the maximum, in my judgment. And so, all things concerned, and you know, neighbors on either side were in support. The neighbor behind sent this letter, you know, had they sent that a little sooner, I would have gone back out there and tried to assess the situation. But I think the photos that they provided gave us a pretty good reading of the topography and how the house behind the complaint about this was, that house is higher, and there's probably is going to be some impact to their view by this seven-foot increase in height of the house. But this is within, this is not substantially more detrimental with respect to neighborhood views and vistas, in my opinion. And I think that the neighbors are perhaps trying to, you know, protect their value of their property or whatever, but I don't see this as asking something from us that isn't, is unusual at all. I think it's an improvement, and I think it meets all of our criteria, and I will support it. It's not substantially more detrimental anywhere at all. It's an improvement. Thanks.
Thank you. Ginny?
So, yeah, I noted 17 years of ownership, and I think you actually mentioned that in one of your hearings, Mr. Ford.
Yes, the Reminds are here, they can verify that, but they've had.
Right, I mean, I appreciate the neighbor's concern. That's exactly, you know, they're directly behind, seven and a half feet is a, is a change. But, you know, the owners have a right to make improvements and changes to their house. It's an upgrade, it's an aging home. It's a beautiful home, but it's aging, and it is deemed to be not historically significant by, and I think that's very important. If it was historic, it might be a different conversation. I think that, and we already covered the historic, you know, I think the lot is 41,000, almost 42,000 square feet, it's a sizable lot, it's a beautiful lot. And I, I don't agree that the house is maxing out. In fact, before even coming here today, I thought, what a refreshing change, similar to what Mr. Veach said, to not have it be pushing inches from the max, but a foot from the max, when clearly, and I also frankly, you know, I respect the neighbor's perspective, but I do think it's a bit disingenuine to be calling out the height when they're two feet over the max. So I don't agree with that, with that argument. And also, the comment about massing, I mean, the house is, it has a second story today, but it's pretty much largely, so it is, it is getting larger in mass. But so does the neighbor's house. The neighbor's house, three stories. So I think that's a little bit disingenuine to be calling out the desire of the homeowner to want to add more space to the, to a second floor and keep it, you know, with a foot below the maximum. Not only that, but the massing, I don't, or the maxing out argument, the height, a foot below, the coverage, you know, decreasing. Mr. Veach, I agree with him, I agree with Lee, we don't usually see that. So I would, I am, I think it meets our criteria, it's certainly, and I don't believe also the images you have of the neighbors and that whole from the, from the seascape, the waterscape, it is not more detrimental to that view of the neighborhood, in my view.
So I'll just make a couple of comments. I agree with all my colleagues. I think just in, just a little in defense of the letter, they were just pointing out that it had been deemed historically significant. They just wanted us to all know that it was an old house, and now it's going to change quite a bit. And we know that. You know, this, this board comes particularly prepared, brings, we bring our best self to every meeting, and we're happy to read the letters, but, and we take them into consideration, absolutely. Now, they also should realize that you could have asked for 30 feet, and you could have asked for a cupola, but you didn't. And I probably would have supported it even if you did, because this is an area where the real streetscape is really the waterscape. And the, I think it's a tribute to the bylaw that we can only have houses 30 feet, because if we could have them higher, could you just imagine they'd be sprouting up, you know, and that wouldn't be Chatham-esque? But this is, I support it. Do you have any comments about the criteria? I mean, you know, the criteria for, the conditions, I always call it criteria.
Oh, conditions.
Yes, yes.
I'll let Mr. Palhemus address that, since they'll be building the house.
Yeah, we, the site, as we discussed, is a large site after the garage being removed. We have plenty of space on the site to control all parking materials, so we have no concerns about anything creeping beyond the site. Other than that, for the summer months, we propose no weekend work in the summer, so have no weekends, just working days in the summer, just to keep the neighborhood, on the weekends in particular, quiet, and then eight to five.
So you want to work through the summer?
We'd like to work through the summer, but eight to five, no weekends.
Even on the exterior.
No weekends, and keep all construction onsite would be our, would be our request.
So let's see what the board thinks of that. What do you think of that, Ginny? Construction on the outside during the summer.
Well, I think it's a remote enough location where I think it can be, and there is a lot of room on that property, so I would, I would agree with that.
Lee?
Yeah, that's okay with me.
Dave?
Yeah, I agree. This is, this is an instance where I, especially that they have supportive neighbors directly on either side, I would, it's better to have them doing the work during the summer with those restricted hours than, than putting the work off until.
Yeah, pushing into another, into another season.
Kicking it over into another, you know, so.
That's a challenge.
No, I, I think it's reasonable, and I am in agreement with that.
Okay, so can we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the application as submitted for application 23-124 for 351 Barn Hill Road with conditions that construction vehicles and activities shall be contained onsite, and if you find you need more at the neighboring properties with their permission. And then just construction activity eight to five, was that?
Summertime.
Summertime, yeah.
Yes, summertime activity eight to five.
Eight to five, Monday through Friday.
No weekends, right.
Okay.
And, yeah, no work on the weekends.
No weekends.
So it's points B and C on, but not A on.
So, right, between, okay, June, no work permitted on the weekends and construction activity eight to five during the summer.
Dave Veach, seconds.
June 30th, Labor Day, sorry.
Very good. So let's take a vote.
Veach votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
I vote yes.
As do I. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I think we're on number, the fourth hearing.
Application number 23-125, David P. Miller and Ashley Ann Baker, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 528 Training Field Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 9K Block 6, Lot 1. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconformant, well, via the construction of an accessory structure with habitable space on a nonconforming lot. The proposed accessory structure will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 2,538 square feet, 6.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,288 square feet, 8.6%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 38,117 square feet or 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Attorney Litchfield, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Bill Litchfield, here on behalf of the applicant, David Miller and Ashley Baker, who are proposing to make a, to build a further accessory building or outbuilding to what is historically known as the Kimball Ryder House home. Lovely house on Training Field Road that's been there since, actually, before I was in Chatham, since 1771. The, David and Ashley have done a very nice job of maintaining the historic structure, and they would like to create an additional building. But this is, as Sarah read, what's referred to as a Bransford or Bjorkland hearing, because everything they're proposing to do, coverage, bulk, dimensional setbacks, those sorts of things, are all in compliance with our bylaw. But because of the Bjorkland case up in Norwell, which was designed to prevent McMansions, it comes within your purview. I think you can find that what is proposed, the accessory building, is not a McMansion. We'll give you, however, a brief idea as to why they want the proposed studio up at the northern corner of their lot. They would like, they both work at home. David has an office in West Dennis, but he likes to work at home. The house that they love and cherish, however, has small rooms, there's no real place for gym equipment, so they'd also like the home gym. As it is now, they moved from the bedroom to hither and yon and so forth, so they like the room. And the large lot that they have, almost 40,000 square feet, 38,000 and change, has room for the additional building. So I'll go into the criteria, it's fairly straightforward. Despite the existing nonconformities, that's the view of what is proposed, despite the existing nonconformity, the site is certainly adequate for the house built about 250 years ago, and the site remains adequate for the construction of the studio slash garage slash home office building, which again complies as to setbacks and as to coverage. An additional accessory structure is consistent with the neighborhood and its history. The property to the south was within memory of a chicken farm and had all sorts of outbuildings. This property, when it was expanded, the northernmost part of the house was actually an outbuilding, was connected a number of years ago. And across the street, the Old Smith or Brown or Franz property has a series of outbuildings, barns and garages, all of which have been connected. So having multiple outbuildings is entirely traditional in this neighborhood. As to compatibility of size, on the next to the last page, the third page of your handout, I have the comparable sizes. We have a. We have a, uh, the third largest lot in the neighborhood. The lot, the neighborhood includes the Pleasant Bay Motel, so there are some very large numbers for the Pleasant Bay Motel. I had to include them because it wouldn't be fair not to. But in terms of residential lots, we have the second largest lot in the neighborhood and a low coverage of 7.7%. If you approve the special permit, it will remain compatible. The structure which we are proposing is setback, uh, there's a typo in my form, but setback 20, no, it isn't, there's not a typo, it's almost 50 feet. It's 49.5 feet from the street. The gross floor area and the living area is still compatible and coverage is just 8.6%. Some of the houses to the southeast are in the 11% and 12% range, so it's certainly going to be compatible and smaller than several in terms of coverage. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, that's easy, there is none, no increase in nonconformity whatsoever. Again, this is a Bjorkland case. As to suitability of the site, the site has been developed for residential use since about 1771, and there were no wetlands or environmental issues. And from a sort of a general environmental point of view, there's also, not so visible right now, but in the summer, there is considerable vegetation between this house and the house back one toward Orleans Road, which is largely a summer rental anyway, as I understand it. As to scale, sighting, mass, views, and vistas, the house itself will be unchanged, which has been a part of the streetscape since before the road was appropriately named. The property, again, has long had accessory structures. What is proposed there, uh, which Sarah has just brought up, is a simple, and I think you can find appropriate, design with the pitch and the details to echo or resemble the main house. The structure, again, is not readily visible, it's without impact on streetscape views and vistas. Compatibility of use, it's an accessory residential use. As to adequacy of water and sewer, we have a Title V for three bedrooms. Given the town's sensitivity to bedroom issues, uh, I would refer you to the last page of the handout, we already recorded a deed restriction, uh, in land court indicating that it will not be a bedroom, will not be used as a bedroom, and that they've gone through that process, their engineers and the Board of Health. Yeah, the criteria in terms of traffic flow and safety, noise, utilities, et cetera, are not really applicable. So as you know, the question is whether constructing a garage, home office, studio building, completely compliant with dimensional and bulk requirements of the zoning bylaw, without any change in setbacks or any increase in nonconformities, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current nonconforming house on a nonconforming lot. There is a necessary legality in even saying substantially, or necessary legality that has to be addressed. The law says that, the question before you is whether something is substantially more detrimental. There is nothing detrimental at all about the existing property. Nonetheless, the law requires that we talk about whether this is substantially more detrimental, since what is there is, in my opinion, not at all detrimental. I think you can find that this is similarly not detrimental. The applicants have a number of needs for the additional space, for a home office, for a garage, for a gym, which can be accommodated by a special permit without the need to make any changes to the, the historic home, which they would prefer not to do. The modest but useful, uh, garage remove vehicles from, a vehicle from the yard, and is by itself an understandable and conforming aspect of the project. Both petitioners work from home as often as possible, and the home office and the gym will be a considerable boon to their lives and to the preservation of this historic property. Most importantly, however, the project be constructed in complete compliance with our zoning bylaw. So given the criteria and the plans, I think that you can find that constructing an additional outbuilding with coverage still well below the limit and meeting all setbacks is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams? Sorry, sorry. I had shut this down because I was making too much noise. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please indicate if so.
I see no one to speak in favor.
All right, I will read the two short notes. One is from Judith Giorgio, January 24th, 2024, our health agent. I have reviewed the plan to add a detached studio garage at this property. Since the studio space opens directly into the garage, it's now considered a bedroom, and the second floor loft area must remain open to the first law. This space will not be allowed to be used as a bedroom. Then we have a note from, um, Charlene and Herbert Todd Greenhall, um, written on January 9th, 2024, and they live at 37 Power Lane. We write in support of the application made by Dave Miller and Ashley Baker for the property located at 528 Training Field Road. We are abudders and have no concerns or issues. They've taken amazing care of this beautiful antique common property, and we are sure that this additional structure will be in keeping with the charm and character of the property and the neighboring properties, and that it will not be more, will be, it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this application here or on Microsoft Teams? Please indicate if so.
There's no one to speak in opposition.
Okay, so, questions from the board? Dave Veatch?
I have no questions.
Jenny?
I have no questions.
Lee?
No questions.
I do not have any questions either, so, um, a motion?
Okay, yeah, let's, um.
I move to make a motion to move to deliberation.
Uh, Dave Veatch, seconds.
I approve.
I approve.
Veatch approves?
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Lee?
Um, well, I think this is a great project. I think it's very appropriate. They have the space, and, um, I, I think it will be great. It certainly is not substantially more detrimental.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, um, they're really impressive property. I lo, I love the, the cedar trees, like the allay of cedar trees that you drive through to get to that property. It's gorgeous. Um, this is totally in keeping with the other buildings on the property, and, uh, it's in no ways it's substantially detrimental. It meets all of our other criteria and, uh, be happy to support it.
Okay, Jenny?
I, I agree, uh, very impressive property. I've often driven it, you know, by it on the street, Training Field, and always wanted to be able to go in and see the other side, so I was happy to be able to do that. I, uh, like the, first of all, you did a very nice job, Mr. Litchfield, and I do think the deed restriction is a good idea, given all of the, um, you know, issues that the town has been having with the bedroom. So I think that was very proactive and I appreciated that. Um, I, I love the, um, the idea of honoring the historic structure and not trying to muck that up with more space, and I appreciate that they're keeping the historic house the way it is. I'm sure that, um, that, you know, the rooms are small and, and they, and I can see the need for more space, and I, I think it's a great project and I would support it.
Okay, I agree with everybody else. So what about conditions?
Uh, I talked to the builder today. Assuming the board approves it, the special permit would be available around the 22nd or 4th of February, and he feels that by the end of June, he can have the building sealed up, so we could live with an exterior, uh, summer construction limitation.
The usual conditions?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anybody want to comment on that?
You know, yeah, the only thing I would say, I mean, given this location and the size of the, the, the structure and everything, I, I don't really think it, 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 there's a much benefit from, from, from restricting summer construction there. I mean, certainly there's not going to be a problem keeping activity on the site, they've got enough room there, and if, it, I, I, it's, I mean, yes, there are neighbors sort of surrounding it, but this is not a large-scale project. So I, I would think that we could just go with the, the summertime time restrictions and the, you know, construction activity contained on the lot, myself.
Okay, what do you think, Lee?
Um, my only concern is the Pleasant Bay Motel, right there. I mean, that's, I, I would go with the usual conditions and, and just hope they can get it sealed up by, by June 30th.
That's a good point. What do you think, Jenny?
I think it's a great point. I was leaning towards Mr. Veatch saying, there's plenty of space on that lot to keep everything going and off on the side, um, but, you know, the hotel's right there, so.
And I generally don't really believe in conditions because of the fact that you don't have to, um, have any conditions if you didn't need a special permit, so I, I don't necessarily think it's fair. But I think specifically here, that's an important business, and we don't want the people to have to listen to any noise and complain and start in. So I think probably on balance, we do our usual conditions.
Sure, I, yeah, I can go along with that. I mean, you know, if they get down to the close and they've just got a little bit, they can always come back to us and get relief from it, you know.
It's been done.
Yeah, it has been done, so, sure.
Okay, so.
We, we, we can accept that. I, I dare say, no disrespect to the motel, but I rather suspect that the motel has more impact on the neighborhood than the neighbors do on the motel.
But it's an important business in the town, so. All right, we'll have a motion.
Okay, so I, uh, move to approve the application as submitted for, uh, 528 Training Field Road with the following conditions. All construction activity and vehicles shall be contained onsite or at a neighboring property if, um, if needed with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction shall be allowed, no work shall be permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM, 5:00 PM.
Dave Veatch, seconds.
Okay, we'll have a vote.
Uh, Jenny votes yes.
I vote yes.
Veatch, your chance.
As do I. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Application number 23-128, Patrick Brogan and Patricia J. Black, care of Michael D. Ford, Esquire, P.O. Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owners of property located at 36 Sears Point Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 11A Block 5, Lot 10. The applicant seeks to extend special permit number 22-001 for one year. The current expiration date is, uh, February 1st, 2024, and the proposed expiration date is February 1st, 2025. Special permit number 22-001 allowed the applicant to partially demolish the existing dwelling, demolish the guest house and pool, and construct a new dwelling and tennis court. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is, in that it is located 23.5 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming in that it will be located 23.5 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 7,549 square feet, 11.8%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,884 square feet, 5.2%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 93,296 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. Madam Chair, as a point of clarification, um, the applicant, attorney Ford, uh, in his narrative, did request a two-year extension, which the board does have the authority to authorize, um, with reasonable cause.
Right.
So I'm not sure there's a lot, say, Mike Ford, representing the, uh, the owner and applicants. So, um, this particular special permit authorized, first, the demolition of a guest house, a pool, and that big main house that was out there. And all of that's been done, so the undevelopment has occurred, but they have not yet, um, they left a piece of the foundation of the main house, uh, upon which there is an approved, um, small, uh, dwelling structure, and they haven't built that yet. And so, uh, that's why I'm here, to seek an extension of that. I will tell you that, uh, we would like the two years because it's very possible that they may come back and ask the board for a few tweaks in the design of that, not necessarily to make it any bigger, but to, just give it a little different look. And so we may be back, uh, for that as well. But, um, they did all the major work of demolishing everything, and, uh, Mr. Veatch, this is another reduction in, in lot coverage. It was, it was, it was done two years ago, though.
I remember, yeah.
So we would ask, uh, with everything going on the last couple of years, they, they didn't get to, to build the small structure, and so they need additional time to do that, and that's what this request is.
So, so our rules on page 13 allow a reasonable extension of time, um, for good cause shown. So can you just state what your good cause is?
Sure. I mean, they did go ahead and, um, do all the demolition, so construction was begun, so I guess we fall under the category was, did it follow through, uh, you know, reasonably and expeditiously? And the question, I had a conversation with Jay about it, eh, you better get an extension because, you know, there's kind of been a break. You did leave the little portion of the foundation, so that's there and we're going to put that up. With everything else going on and all that demolition and then completing the main house on the other side, they just haven't got to this one, and they may want to modify that plan a little bit, so they need that additional time.
So, ma, basically because of the pandemic, we call it that?
Yeah.
All right.
Among other things, yeah.
All right, so, what do you think, Mr. Veatch?
Oh, I, you know, I, I think it certainly is.
Yes, so, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
So, all right. So at this point, does?
Oh, right.
Anybody wish to speak in favor of the application? And if so, please indicate.
There's no one to speak in favor.
All right, please, I'll read the correspondence. Sorry, I jumped the gun. And, let's see, we have, I think we just have, uh, two quick letters from the health agent, uh, January 24th, um, 2024, from Judith Giorgio. I have no objection to the extension of the special permit of this property. And then we have a letter from, uh, let's see, the Conservation Commission. This was, uh, January 22nd, 2024. The applicant filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission in November 2021. The project was conditioned to meet the performance standards, um, and the regulations promulgated thereunder. So we don't have anything else in the correspondence. Does anybody wish to speak against this application, either here or on Microsoft Teams or have a specific question?
There's no one to speak in opposition.
Okay, so now we do questions from the board. Dave Veatch?
I have no questions.
Jenny?
Jenny has no questions.
Lee?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions, so have a motion?
Uh, yes, I move to approve the requ-
Or to close the hearing?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I moved to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
Dave Veatch, seconds.
Jenny approves.
I approve.
Veatch approves.
As do I. Okay, now, deliberations. Jenny?
Uh, I am fine with what, or I agree with my, with what Mr. Ford has put forward, and, um, I see no reason to not grant the extension.
Lee?
I agree, I think it's a reasonable request.
All right, Dave?
Yeah, and, and again, this was the other, the, uh, other, you know, reduction of, uh, of, um, gross floor area and building, uh, coverage that has been proposed, and, you know, that still stands as a remarkable e, event, and, uh, and I think deserves our further cooperation, uh, in granting this.
And I also understand that these have never been denied in the history of time, so, um, far be it from me to get in the way of that.
I, I appreciate that attitude, Madam Chair.
So we'll take a vote?
Uh, Jenny votes yes.
I vote yes.
Veatch votes yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right.
And that was for the two years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we do a motion?
No.
I told Mr. Litchfield I'd be about an hour and a half, so I guess I beat that time.
Do you want to sit down and do that? So we're just going to go back and just fix that up and do a motion for?
So I move to approve the requested two-year extension of the existing special permit,
And Veatch, Dave Veatch?
Well, oh, oh, hold on, uh, no, that was the existing per, special permit. For good cause shown for application 23-128 with conditions, did we want to add those?
The same as we-
Same conditions.
Same, same conditions, that way.
Dave Veatch, seconds.
Okay, very good. Jenny?
Jenny approves.
Lee?
I approve.
Veatch approves?
And as do I.
Thank you.
Now you're dismissed. We're going to get out of here at six, what about that? Okay.
Application number 23-126, Charles and Maureen Gohean, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 33 Whistler Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham- 33 Whistler Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's map, 16J Block 30A, Lot 10A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located 30.7 feet from the road and 23.3 feet from the West Hurley Abutter. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, and that it will be located 31.5 feet from the road, where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,391 square feet, 4.2%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,187 square feet, 9.7%, or 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 32,927 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield, welcome back.
Good afternoon. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Charlie and Maureen Goheen, who are in the rear of the building, or the room, rather. And with me is Karen Kempton, with whom you are familiar. You may recall that just short of two years ago, we were in front of you for a proposal to renovate the existing house. And you approved the plans that the Goheens proposed, and I presented on their behalf. In thinking further about it, learning more about the condition of the existing house, they determined that it wasn't feasible, economical, sage, wise, or a very good idea to do what they had originally proposed, and for a variety of reasons. And they retained Karen to come up with plans for a new house on the site. It is essentially the same size as what was proposed, but I think, and I think you can find, a more attractive house. What is there now has some limitations. It was built by the Goheen family 45 years ago. But I think what Karen has done is in keeping with the neighborhood. Of course, this particular lot is set back, or the site of this is set back 350-odd feet from Scattery Road, so even if it weren't an attractive house, it wouldn't cause any particular problems. But with that, if I could turn it over to Karen to talk about what she's designed, that'll go into the criteria.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Karen Kempton, architect for Maureen and Charlie Goheen. So when I first met with the Goheens in 2022, as Bill mentioned, they had plans done for renovation of their home. But after getting pricing from various builders, they found that it was too expensive, a project that did not resolve the issues with the existing house. So then the house was built in 1982. It is a multi-level, modern-looking house with a drive-under garage and five split-level areas of living space. So Maureen and Charlie decided a new home would be better suited for their new needs, with a first-floor bedroom, an open kitchen dining living room that increased the water views to the southeast, while giving them some outside living space with some privacy from the street. Presently, the front door, if we can go back to the site plan for a minute, so the existing, there it is. So this is the existing house. This is Whistler Lane. So as you come up here, the actual front door to the existing house is right here. So it's hidden around the side. You don't see it from the main road. So one of the goals was to have a front door and a front entry face Whistler Lane, and then to have the garage hidden on the side and accessed from the side dirt road. The garage would be at the first-floor level, rather than two flights of stairs down, as it is now. Although the added 670 square feet of coverage is for the garage, we felt it's an important change for the Goheens to age and place. We have kept the house in a similar location as existing home respects the neighbor's views and easements, and the septic system has been relocated out of the 100-foot buffer to the top of the bank. The first-floor elevation is about four inches below the existing first floor, and the ridge height is four inches lower than the existing ridge. So this means that the existing structure is basically the same height. In reality, the new ridge height will be an additional 10 inches lower, but I'm giving myself a buffer just for construction discrepancies. The building coverage, if we can go to the first-floor plan, the building coverage of the house is 9.7%, but 665 square feet of that, or 2%, are the covered porch areas that are all one-story. This space is important to the Goheens as it gives them a degree of privacy from the road and shade on the south side of the house, where they enjoy the view and their extensive lawn. So again, there is a covered porch here, covered porch here, no living space above it, and a covered porch here that the roofline breaks down the front elevation of the house, if we can go back to the front elevation. The front porch and the extended roofline drop the scale of the house, as do the three A-frame dormers along the front, rather than a long, continuous shed dormer. The side covered porch and balcony give Maureen and Charlie additional outside living space without increasing the scale of the house. Another 2% increase of the building coverage is the addition of the garage. But as it is hidden on the right rear of the house, we do not think it adds to the visible size of the house. Again, the garage seen right there, back, maybe 20 feet from the front of the house, and you access it from the side. So that main core of the living house, the living space of the house is 5.7% building coverage, basically, which is only 1.5% larger than the existing house. So we hope that you agree that the new home is an attractive addition to the neighborhood, which, while giving the Goheens much-needed and usable space to continue to enjoy this beautiful area of Chatham.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. As for the criteria, as to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks, notwithstanding the setback nonconformities that we have, the site is adequate for a house built by the Goheen family some 40 years ago under prior zoning. We have a conforming 40,000-square-foot lot. I think you can find the site to be adequate for the new home, allowing for continued family use for generations to come. The quote "street encroachment" quote-unquote is sort of an odd situation, because the street to which we are too close is Whistler Lane, which is a dirt road. And interestingly, it's actually a part of our lot. Sarah and Jay and I have been talking about this literally for years. And there's a question as to how we can be encroaching on a street which is we actually own. We're not going to argue that point. So we acknowledge that we are encroaching on the street, even though we're about 40 feet away from the lot line on the far side. So we are essentially encroaching on ourselves. And the street setback deficiency is less than that of the covered house. As to compatibility of size, we have a relatively large lot. Several of those, which are nominally larger, have significant wetlands. And we have a living area right now of about 1,600 square feet, which is by far the smallest in the neighborhood, and we have very low coverage at 3%. If you approve the special permit, it remains compatible at 7.9% of the entire lot, because the lot, again, includes the panhandle in Whistler Lane, so that's why we have a conforming lot. And it's consistent with the neighboring homes on the third page of the handout. It's smaller than several. So if you approve the special permit, it will remain a reasonable, compatible, and appropriate home. And the neighbors, as the chair will read later, number of neighbors have written in support of the proposal. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, there is none. The sideline nonconformity has been eliminated, and we have moved a little bit further away from that thoroughfare, Whistler Lane. As to suitability of site, impact on natural environment, the site is suitable for residential use, as it has been for the 65 or 70 years since the Goheen family first purchased this property. Unlike some in the neighborhood, we're not in a floodplain. It remains suitable. Conservation has heard the proposal, and the current plan is responsible to the considerations and concerns that they have raised. As to scale, citing mass views and vistas, as Karen shared, it'll be described at the current split level of modest scale is cited from far from a public way, but not necessarily an award winner. If you approve the new house, it will remain appropriate for the site. The scale and the mass are consistent with the surroundings, and it has no impact on neighborhood views or vistas. Again, the abutters have written in support. And we're, as I said, we're sighted 350 or 360 feet back from a public way. As to compatibility of use, currently, the current house is seasonal residential. This is planned for year-round residential use. As to adequacy of water and sewer, we currently have town water, and we have a four-bedroom septic. The Health Agent has reviewed and approved. The issue then is whether construction of a new house with a reduction of one nonconformity and a lessening of a second one, and with a, I believe, slightly smaller footprint than that previously approved, but still providing additional living area, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think that you can find that it is not, because the house will remain compatible. Gross floor area and living area are in keeping with nearby properties, and still less than some. It will be a reasonable, in either comparative or absolute terms, and attractive home. Charlie and Maureen have a long history in the neighborhood, and while the ZBA, rather than neighbors, make the decision, I think the neighborhood support can be a good indication of the lack of detriment. And in light of the criteria and the plans, I think that you can find it is, in fact, not at all substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of the application? If so, please indicate.
I see no one to speak in favor.
Okay, I have about six letters to read. None of them are particularly long, but here we go. Judith Giorgio, the Health Agent, January 24th, 2024, writes, "I have reviewed the plan to demolish the existing dwelling and rebuild a new dwelling. The site plan submitted indicates that there is a 32,927 square foot of upland in this property, and that the existing dwelling has two bedrooms. In accordance with the Board of Health Nitrogen Loading Regulation, they are allowed three bedrooms. The fourth bedroom must be approved by the Board of Health with an IA septic system." Then on January 22nd, 2024, we have a note from the Conservation Commission. The project was heard on 12/6/23 and scheduled for a follow-up hearing on January 24th, 2024. The project will be conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection and the Town of Chatham Local Wetland Bylaw, and they're under if approved. Then we have a note from Eileen Amy Ryan, M.D., of 119 Scattery Road, on January 6th, 2024. Members of the Town ZBA, I am writing as the owner of an abutting property to Charlie and Maureen Goheen's property at 33 Whistler. The connection between the Ryans and Goheens in North Chatham goes back some 70 years and continues today in ongoing friendships and the fact that I now own the next-door old Chatham home that was the Goheen summer place for most of this time. The future means as much to me as the memory of our past, as I am transitioning to make this beautiful neighborhood my full-time home. Charlie and Maureen sent me the plans for the new home, and I am delighted with what they are envisioning. The house looks beautiful and takes advantage of the natural layout of the property. I have worked with Karen Kempton and am confident the result will be terrific complement to its surroundings, its design quality, and attention to detail. I like how they've positioned a patio to the west of the covered porch, kind of mirrors my own patio, and it just gives a neighborly feel. Please feel free to contact me with any questions." And we have a note from Steve Schroeder, and he lives, it does not say, Atlas Refinery Incorporated. Well, let's see if it says it in the name. Yeah, okay. "My name is Steve Schroeder, and my wife Pamela and I have a home on 36 Whistler Lane. Our home is adjacent to Charlie and Maureen Goheen's home on 33 Whistler. We understand that the Goheens are going to build a completely new house, and we have seen the plans by Karen Kempton and the site plan developed by Thad Eldridge. We think the plans developed for this property are very attractive and most definitely suitable for their property. We know the property well, as we have been neighbors for over 24 years. We have absolutely no objection to Charlie and Maureen's interest to build their new home, and that their new home will only enhance and improve the values of our neighborhood and surrounding area. The Goheen family has very old and deep roots in North Chatham, and we cherish their friendship and know how much they respect the ordinances and special permitting for such a project. Therefore, we strongly support the Goheens' new home construction project and strongly urge the Town of Chatham Boarding Zone of Appeals to approve their project. Thank you for your time and opportunity to support Charlie and Maureen in this process." Next, we have a note from Julia Ryan Parker, 43 and 69 Whistler Lane, Scattery Road Tennis Court property, written on January 4th, 2024. "I am writing as a trustee and representative to the Ryan Family Property Trust, which owns the abutting property to the Goheens, 33 Whistler. The Ryan and Goheen families have been neighbors and friends for more than 70 years. As you can imagine, we share deep-rooted love and respect for our small neighborhood in North Chatham. We have reviewed the plans on Whistler and are fully in support. The proposed house will be in keeping with the size and style of surrounding homes and will be a welcome upgrade to our street. Karen Kempton and the architect of this project is well-known to our family, and we know this house will be built with the quality and care-to details. We especially appreciate the entry into the garage will be off to the rear path versus directly off to Whistler Lane. Should you have any further questions, don't hesitate to contact me." Next, we have a note from, let's see, oh, very tough, Andrew P. Young, 66 Quatch-Pinnacott Road in North Chatham. On, let's see, January 13th, 2024, "I support the Goheens' application for a special permit to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot, and the construction of a new dwelling as set forth in the plans on file. Thank you, Andy." And that concludes our letters. Does anybody wish to speak against the application? Here are on Microsoft Teams. If so, please indicate.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay, questions from the board. Ginny?
Mr. Litchfield, quick question for you. This really isn't, it's more for just my learning. So I noticed that it's got a shed in this top western corner here. And a shed, my understanding is, has to be a third of the setbacks, which it is. But is that road, that easement, is that not considered the road?
On the north side, that is an easement. That is not a road.
A road, okay. If it were a road, it would have to be 40?
I'd be, I'd get confused between exterior mechanical appliance systems, which only need to meet the abutters setback. Shed?
So a shed under 100 square feet?
Under, well, yeah, that's.
If it's over 100 square feet, it would need to meet the road setback. However, by special permit through the Board of Appeals, they could seek relief to have it within that setback.
Right.
Okay. Which is NA anyway, because it's not a road, so that's what I wanted.
Yeah, it is, it is not a way. The difference between it and the other part of Whistler, we don't have three or four months to discuss that.
Yeah, okay. No, it was, it wasn't a big deal, but I just.
No, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Ginny? No? You're all set? Okay, Lee?
I have no questions.
Dave Veach?
I have no questions, right.
And I just have one question. You're happy with the placement of the mechanicals at this juncture?
I'm going to defer to Karen.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not indicating at all that they're not a good idea, but we've had recent issues with people playing mechanical chairs with their.
No, we reviewed it with Thad, and we're all set.
Very good. And if you need to change anything, just come back.
We will. Very, very good.
We like you, but we don't like you that much. We don't want to come back again.
Yeah, well, okay, so if no one else has any questions, we will have a motion.
Yeah, I move to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
And Dave Veach seconds.
I approve.
I approve.
Veach approves?
As do I. So deliberations. Dave Veach?
Oh, well, this, I certainly can support this project. This is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. I, you know, it's quite an improvement, I think, and I can see the desire to replace the. I think, and I can see the desire to replace that older home. I don't, I mean, I remember going out there and seeing the previous application, but I don't remember the details of it. But Karen, you've done a great job with this, and I think that this meets all of our criteria, and you very enthusiastically support it.
Yeah, Lee?
Oh, I totally agree. I think it's a great improvement. It's a lovely home. It's a great area, and I will approve it.
And Ginny?
So I agree. I think it's a really nice plan, and it suits the lot perfectly. Again, we have the height not approaching, you know, or just inches from the max. I appreciate that. And it meets our criteria. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental. And I think it's a great plan.
And Mr. Litchfield, what did you say about not award-winning?
The prior house, the existing house.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
But if I could, no, Karen, Karen is going to win awards. We're going to do something about that. If I could, however...
Yes.
Given the size of our lot and our lack of proximity to any immediate abutters, as well as the fact that the abutters are all aware and supportive, the Goheens have waited two years. They would like to move forward with construction, so if there is not a limitation on summer construction, that would be very helpful and very much appreciated.
We'll discuss that now. So, Lee, what do you think of that? What do you think about conditions?
Well, I think, you know, Whistler Lane is not a busy road, but there are lots of houses that need to get access down Whistler. Not lots, there are a few. I know there's construction going on there right now, a little bit further down. I don't know. I would like to hear what my fellow board members think.
Dave, Veatch, what do you think?
I'm fine with, you know, this neighborhood, this is a pretty close neighborhood, and I would expect, based on the letters that we've gotten, a lot of cooperation within the neighborhood. And I think, I feel pretty confident that this is a situation where we don't need to control exterior summer construction. I think, give them the chance to move forward as quickly as possible. I think that's justified in this case, yeah.
What do you think, Ginny?
I, there's plenty of property. All the neighbors are all, like, almost family members. I think personally, I, from my own experience, I'm in favor of getting the construction done as soon as you can. And so I don't see a reason for limitation.
So as long as they keep their, you know, all the construction vehicles on site?
We would, we would do that and keep Whistler open, absolutely.
And I don't remember what the conditions were in a very close proximity house that's going on now. But I, again, I have said it before, I always say it, I don't think we really should have restrictions, because it's not fair to those who don't need a special permit. And the town does have noise laws. So I also support no conditions.
And if I could, Madam Chairman, just for the board's interest, the 2022 special permit you granted did not have a summer restriction.
Very good, very good. So we're consistent. So how about a motion?
Okay, so I move to approve application number 23-126 as submitted with no conditions.
Well, I think, I think we were talking about the condition, we were talking about the all vehicles, all the...
All vehicles on site?
All vehicles on site.
It's that one.
Oh, okay.
And...
Yes, okay. I assumed that was assumed, but I'll clarify, so...
And then also, I just, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a problem, but I think it's good to restrict the time, no work on weekends and 7:00 or, you know, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, if that's...
During the summer.
During the summer, yeah.
So that's conditions, but...
That's a condition.
That's acceptable.
Yeah, that's a reasonable compromise. That's not slowing progress down particularly. It's keeping work from not happening until 7:00 at night, you know.
You'd feel more comfortable with that?
I feel more comfortable with that.
What about you, Lee?
Yes, I feel, I feel comfortable with condition 1, 2, B, and C.
Ginny?
I am too.
All right, so you can articulate the motion.
Okay. So again, I move to approve application number 23-126 as submitted with the following conditions. All construction activity vehicles shall be contained on site or in a neighboring property with the permission of property owner. And then between June 30 and Labor Day, no work should be permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
All right, good.
Dave, Veatch seconds.
Ginny approves.
I approve.
And Veatch approves.
As do I. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Oh, if you could, please, sir, if you'd like to go to the mic, wait till you get there. Take your time.
Well, first off, thank you very much. Charlie Goheen, here with my wife, Maureen. And we didn't get a chance to talk with Bill before this session, but I was very surprised to hear that we need an IA system. We went through this a few years ago. It was clarified that we didn't need an IA system, because we've got over 40,000 square feet when you count Whistler Lane, and it's something we really don't want, the expense and the hassle of having to maintain something like that.
That's not their purview. We'll deal with that.
Yeah, we would love to address that, but that's not our, you know, not our purview.
I didn't know. This is all new to me. I apologize.
Even if we said, okay, you're all set, you wouldn't be.
It's the first we heard about it, so it could be done outside of this.
Yes, for the health.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah, best of luck. All right. So we had a skeleton crew. Thank you, everybody. We were all sequestered since Monday, so that we can pull this off. No, I'm only kidding. So how about a motion to adjourn?
I move to close the hearing, January 25, 2024.
Uh, Dave, Veatch seconds.
Ginny approves.
I approve.
Veatch approves?
As do I. Good night, Chatham.
6:08 PM.